Now it really is quiet.
You don't have silence in the room?
Yeah, you do.
I bet it won't work.
Maybe you want to...
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Why not?
Just...
Sorry, sorry Jeff. It's your call.
Yeah.
I have no authority here, so I said yes, but you need Jeff's permission.
You're blessed.
That is not permission. So it looks like, what, we have two minutes to go here?
Yeah.
Wow.
I'll school over your side, Chris. Very well, thank you. Oh, I'm doing great. Rice?
Uh, he goes SMU.
I know it was down that way somewhere.
He got 101 on his last county test.
Good.
Nice.
Somebody wants to do...
We have a beam.
Nobody wants to do thunder?
Finance.
Yeah, just stick in a little...
Yeah.
You're not quite in the spotlight, but close.
I mean peel off all my layers.
Go, there we go.
Be in the scarrowland field.
No, thank you for the worry.
And unfortunately, the opposing team was late, so they're still going. Love you all.
Thanks for coming. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the HPV on October 18th, 2022, Tuesday. And do I have a motion to open meeting?
Second.
Second. So... They're very quick, weren't they?
I see that. Okay, remember McBride?
President?
Yes.
Voting, yes. Member... Yes. Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Benham? Yes. It's your call.
Yes.
Which guesses?
Okay, very good. Do we have any board members here that P L A need to recuse themselves for any reason again? Bring this up, because at this point, kind of been down that road before. Well, no?
It'd be good to get it on.
I'm refusing.
No. No one is refusing themselves, okay. Tentative agenda.
Can Bill hear us? Bill, can you hear us at all?
I can hear you, yes.
Great. The tentative agenda is, and this is some summary form, we're gonna hear from the applicant this evening first, then we'll get questions from this board, then we're gonna ask for public input, which may be online or, you know, here, and then we'll take it from there, depending on how things work out. So you guys are primed and ready to go in the front row.
Thank you. Uh-oh.
What's that?
He just turned off his camera?
Yeah. Chris didn't move a bit, I can tell you that.
Bill? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Your camera's off, we need to turn it back on.
Yes, somebody else just called me. Okay, there it is.
There we go.
Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Hold it flat, it'll be fine.
Okay. Very good.
So I'm Chris DiMarzo, I'm the owners of Pittsburgh Canal Side Properties. Craig Jensen is with me from C J S. Our attorney, Chris Nadler, is here with us. Thanks for making time Monday night to come have a special meeting. I think the easiest thing to do is just let me quickly remind us where we were in September and then tell you if it was a brief where we are. So we met September 1st, and these videos are actually very helpful. I went back through the videos and I took notes of everything, your comments of all board. And this is what I, summary of what I came up with. Number one, we talked about the view shed from Southern Street. We went over that. Craig went over his study with you in September. And your concern was that we didn't obstruct the tree line for the horizon. Each one of you, in different ways, mentioned your concern with the fourth story on this building number seven in different ways, so that was something that kept coming around. We talked, you mentioned pedestrian scale and appeal as you entered the product to the community. Architectural features, we talked about variation of buildings and materials, individual entrances, balconies, and a human scale. Those were some of the things that were discussed, the highlights that I picked up. So after that, I sat with the architects, threw the plans on the table. We figured out what we can do to make some substantial changes to your comments. The biggest thing that I came up with was to remove that fourth floor. I just felt that that was a concern of each of you in some different way, especially Bill. And I know that Bill, you know, wanted this three stories with some other variation for a long time, so we agreed, take off the fourth floor. That was really the biggest change. We added some exterior material enhancements. We added some wood areas that I know you asked about, some wood, and some certain corners of the building on different elevations. Not an incredible amount, but enough to break it up a little more, make it a little bit better. We added a dormer in building five, and one or two balconies. And then really, the work that they've done that isn't visible is some interior work, reconfiguring the units on the inside of those.
So what does that mean, sir? I mean, Frank?
Uh, they took some three-bedroom units, made them into maybe two-one bedrooms. Because we lost that space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They reconfigured things to keep the unit count reasonable and the mix acceptable to us. Those are the highlights of the change. Now, again, from where we were in 2014, this is, overall, the size of this is about 35% less. I think that's a big change. We've really made some serious cuts. I think the project is still fantastic. And over the last year, working with Jeff, Kristen, Bill, and now you two, we've made some, well, last November, the letter that came from this board said that the architecture meets the criteria. However, I think even over the last year, I think the little details that we have put in have enhanced that even more. So that's basically where we are. I think we've come a long way. I would ask you to approve the C of A tonight and let us, let the architects get into the detail of the drawings and some of those things for your consultants' review. Craig is here and I'm here if you have any questions, but hopefully you can proceed. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think...
Oh, you...
No, I'm not, I'm trying to add at this point, I think Chris covered it pretty well, I think. There's something that you want to address.
Okay, now you want to step through this?
Only if you want me to.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, just a quick...
You know? Yeah.
Yeah.
This is Bill McBride, can I add this comment to what Chris just said? Back in November, we had a concern about the fact that he had removed the units between what I call building seven A and seven B, and put those on the fourth floor. And we had a concern about that being on the fourth floor. And the applicant heard that concern, they removed that from the fourth floor. And by the way, Chris didn't say this, but they threw those units, that volume away. So when we were looking at a 33% reduction to the mass and scale versus what it was back in 2014, we're now at a, by my calculations, a 34.5% reduction. So not only did they remove those units from the fourth floor, they threw them away. And that increased the reduction of cubic volume of residential space.
Thanks, Bill. I'm just thinking about, we had looked at some details on, you know, architectural detail. And I think it's, I think we kind of got the scale and size, we've looked at a lot of that, but this, from sort of here on in, would be great to have an overview on that.
Can you take me through that sheet, what we're trying to show there in the human scale and the entryways?
Yeah.
I hope I have exactly, I think I have the same pages and same sheet, but I don't know if that's true. Sure, I printed this out.
Uh, it is...
Do you go to that next?
Uh, just that, really.
Building...
I just didn't remember.
Building one entrance, is what it says on the bottom.
Right.
So traffic, yeah.
So, you know, as you're looking down this kind of Canal Street elevation, you can see these various elements, you know, kind of as they extend down the site from both, you know, building one, and then you're seeing up to the start of buildings, both two and, you know, way in distance, you're seeing building three. But you can see, you know, the center building here with the balconies projecting off, that's the three-story portion of building one. And then you can see the flanking portion, you know, to the right there where it steps down to two stories, you can start to see a railing there that would be a balcony for the portion of the building that's set back. And then beyond that, there's a break, you know, and then it started to, it's building two, and you can see the three-story portion there, and then where it steps down in the middle, there's the two-story portion. You're so close to the buildings here that you can't see all the different roof configurations, because there's, you know, some gable roofs and some platterings and other things going on. You can only start to see maybe one of those in the distance, whereas if you're further back, I think you'd see that additional kind of garage or volume.
On a feel basis, this view was trying to show that people will be sitting on their porches and it will be welcoming. It is a streetscape, it doesn't show the trees, but it's a, there'll be a road, a tree lawn, a sidewalk, and then the entryways to the individual units, which is the village streetscape. That's what we tried to achieve.
Just a question, because I understand about the loss of units from losing that fourth floor. I cared less about losing units than I did about the actual height. We talked a lot the last time about the height differential, and you argued that it could be almost the same. And I apologize, but I don't have that memorized. But was it, to what is it, losing that fourth floor in terms of height?
So we took off about 11 and a half feet off the building by taking that fourth floor off. There are still some gable roofs in locations where there were previously gable roofs that still project up into that zone, but it's just a gable roof, it's not an actual floor, so it's not as contiguous or as much obstruction. The point I tried to make before was that, yeah, you still had some elements at that height before, but they weren't, it wasn't a full floor. So, yeah, we lost about 11 and a half feet.
Most specifically, though, and especially from your point of view in those bleachers at Southern,
Just took the picture tonight.
Right. So that building now, which is closest to that view, won't have that fourth story. So that is a change from there. Even with the fourth story, we believe you still wouldn't, you could see over the horizon.
Still shouldn't bring the tree line, but...
This would be a little bit better, especially from that advantage.
It would be substantially better if that's the issue that, you know, you're focused on. I mean, from an overall design perspective, I can debate whether it's better or not. I think it's fine, I'm not dismissing the removal of it, I think that's great. And certainly the few gables, like on building seven, there's only one or two little things that poke up above. So they're very, like, intermittent, whereas before there was a lot of continuity to what was projecting above the third floor line.
So I know your argument between the gable roofs and the fourth floor and everything like that, but when you guys keep saying that there's no more fourth floor, what is on building seven? Isn't there a fourth floor still?
Explain him the mezzanine.
Yeah, so there's one unit that has a little bump next to the bridge. You see one little unit poking up there. That's a mezzanine on a third floor. So it is like a balcony within the unit.
So it's like an upper-scale apartment that has a second floor?
Like, almost like a penthouse apartment, exactly.
A fourth floor, but it's not necessarily a fourth floor.
Yeah, so you can define...
Yeah, I want to hear what you, that was gonna be one of my questions, is your understanding of fourth floor. I'm just, I'm not, I'm just, and I understand like the gable roof and the height, and if we were fine with view shed, but I just, so you keep saying no more fourth floor, and I'm flicking through this, I'm like, okay.
The elevator, there's no four on the elevator.
Right, exactly.
There's only three.
So...
It's not that funny, I mean, I'm just trying to...
So there's this little piece that pokes up. We did that because the unit configuration we had in allocation was a duplex.
Yeah.
We had a duplex there already, which is like a little two-story unit. If the second floor of a duplex is below a certain percentage of the floor below it,
Yeah.
we can qualify as a mezzanine, so it doesn't, it doesn't technically become a fourth floor by code. You might look at it and say, that's, you know, the fourth level up on the building. I can tell you it's not a fourth floor, it's a mezzanine on the third floor, but it does project up higher, right? We didn't think that was a downside because it's so, like, it's such a small percentage of the... Yeah, it's a nice apartment, and it breaks up, you know, this long horizontal line with just like, almost like a little tower.
Yeah.
So it's more like a tower to me than it is a, if the fourth floor starts to get horizontal.
Yeah, no, then it becomes...
Then it starts to become more like a band, which you're like, okay, that's blocking me. Whereas if you look at like a church dome or something, it doesn't really block the horizon, it kind of adds to it.
No, and that's really what my question was, to hear your explanation of this feature on building seven.
Before, we had both this little mezzanine on one side of the bridge, and then we had an entire fourth floor on the other side of the bridge. And we did that because we didn't want to have a corridor running above the bridge, so we had to have all the fourth floor on one side and access the upper portion of the mezzanine without bringing a corridor across the bridge, essentially, on the fourth floor. So that was a strategy to get it, you know, in two places, unconnected.
Yeah.
But now we just got rid of this.
I have a question. This picture shows what looks like a bump out in the front. And then I'm looking closer, is this an elevated balcony? It's on building five? Is that what that is? It seems to be...
Oh, no, Jeff, that's still building number two.
Yeah, that's building two, that's correct.
So this is all one?
This is where building one stops?
It's two goes from here.
And this is two, where two starts.
So... So that's part of two?
Yeah.
That was a good, was my guess on that.
So because the site slopes down, you know, from Railroad Street to Canal Street, and you're entering on the Railroad Street elevation, that's your level entrance. By the time you get to the Canal Street side of the first floor, you're above grade, right? Because the grades are sloping now. So any porches or patios or whatever you want to call them, terraces on those first units on the canal side will be above grade at that point. So depending on how we manipulate the grade, it'd be great in some cases if we can keep it less than 30 inches, because then we don't have to have guardrails and things. But there'll be some, there's some variation of the grade on that side. So in these cases, yeah, there'll be a little railing and a little, like, balcony. But as you can see in one of the foreground, you know, we'll have stairs coming down, so you can still use these as an entrance to your unit. You'll have an entrance off the hallway of the building. You'll be able to come in the park underneath, go up through the elevator, walk down the hall, go into your unit. But you would also be able to just leave right out the canal side, just walk right out the canal side and, you know, go for a walk without going out the railroad side where there'll be a common doorway. There's no common doorways on the canal side. The only door on the canal side is to your unit, you know what I'm saying? Only on the railroad side do you get common doors. So if you lived in floor two or floor three, and you want to get to your unit, you either come from the parking below, or you come from an entrance on the railroad street side.
Which would have access to other units.
Yes.
Yeah, this looked like a little enclosed yard, front yard, but now I see it's raised above grade.
Yep.
Okay, oh, it's also reflected, apparently, in building five.
Yeah, it probably is reflected, it should be very similar.
Now, you mentioned parking, so I just have one question on that, just kind of going through. Is it underground parking per building, or is it, where does everyone enter? Because on some of these, you see, like, building three and four, you can see the garage entrances.
So...
But then as you're looking through other ones, how does this work?
The site plan makes it clear, but buildings one through three are connected, buildings four through six are connected underground.
Oh, okay.
And then building seven stands alone, right?
Okay, so there's three individual garages.
Three individual garages, exactly.
Which is obviously nice to not have a garage on every single building, but it was a question on how everyone will get through that garage entrance.
Reducing the number of curb cuts, I think, is a good thing, because then it just doesn't break up the sidewalk and it makes it a little safer and everything, so it's just, it's just better to link them in, and there's no downside.
Those garage doors, looks like they have glass in them, is that?
No, that's, that's at one level on building three, but the garage doors would be solid.
Yeah.
You'll drive in, there won't be any lift gates.
Okay.
But there will be a key card, the key card in the garage door will go up, so it's secure.
I very much appreciate you anybody who put the canal side building, I'm still a little bit just not whole after, and I guess I'd like to talk about the videos for a minute. I'm curious about the number of panes, like, if you were to allow them now?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is.
Is this building, is it just much more modern?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I want to bring that out.
Versus something like this.
So you're looking at those two, right, exactly. Yeah.
Right, an eight over eight, or two over two?
Yeah. So... We have a wide variety of window types, right? So we have some that might be two over two, we have, I think we have some that are four over four, some that are one over one, we have a lot of different things. And sometimes it's little lintel sizes, you know, other kinds of casings or whatever, depending on the material that it's, you know, set in. For us, I think it's important to have variety. I wouldn't, I'm not a, well... So we're restoring the aqueduct building downtown right now, right? The one where the constellation's going in. And we looked at all the historical photos back from the turn of the century, you know, the 1800s, 1900s, all the way through. And the windows were replaced in the building several times, all the way through, you know? So they went from one pane, you know, one configuration to another, to another. And, you know, that's a historic activity project, so the National Park Service and the ship will care about what we're doing. But we chose a certain period of significance, and in that one, we're actually going mostly with bigger panes of glass. Like, we're going two over two in one case, or three over three in another, different buildings. I just think it, it's, in my opinion, better for the resident, because they get a little bit less obstructive view. It makes it a little more dramatic for the resident. And even way back in the teens and twenties, they were using bigger pieces of glass. I think, you know, the six over six or eight over eights, that's from, like, pre-Victorian, you know, pre-Victorian. By the time you got to Victorian times, they're already doing bigger pieces of glass. So a lot, I mean, I don't know. I guess you could choose your period of significance for this canal development and say, hey, we're canal development of the, choose your period, you know what I'm saying? If you choose a different timeframe, you could choose a different window configuration. So I don't know if we're opposed...
Did you choose mine?
Well, we tried to, well, we're more in the kind of turn of the century kind of thing, like post-Victorian, I would say. It's still the same kind of industrial character that they would build then. If you look at a barn from that era versus a barn that's earlier, you're not going to see a lot of differences, or even an industrial building. I just think it's a little less busy, and I think it kind of fits who we are. It's still compatible with the village, but I think if we went back to like the kind of Greek revival era, even though the canal was starting to get built then, I still feel like it's a little too, what's the word for it? Like derivative, almost, you know what I'm saying? Like, I feel like we're kind of, like, we're not really from that era, so maybe this is a better compromise for me, in my mind. You might have a different opinion, which I totally understand.
I mean, as a homeowner, I always want to bring those things out.
There you go.
But that's not why I'm here today. And I see a lot of one over ones and two over twos and not anything unusual, like people being gross and waiting to get smaller.
I think that we may have some, well, we may not have any four over fours, I don't think we do. Yeah, we play now. Yeah. And I guess it's somewhat of a conscious choice that we think that's just a little bit less busy and a little better for the development, still compatible.
But as we develop the window schedule, there are 47 different types of windows and doors, so there's a lot of different configurations.
There's a lot of variations.
Yeah.
But there may not be a six over six or an eight over eight.
So you guys developing the window schedule, is that anything that this board is gonna have input on or discuss? Is that something worth discussing tonight? Is that something that we'll discuss in the future?
I think you've got some thoughts on that, Jeff, on that.
Well, they have met what the application requirements are. We'll see. There's nothing in there about windows, I mean, the styles, certainly. I mean, right, so would you have jurisdiction over, you know, six over six, eight over, you know, whatever you're looking at, absolutely?
Yeah, exactly.
So that is something that can be discussed.
Yeah. And I think when Chris is saying we've got this many different styles, by the time you say all the different pane configurations we have, and the different lintel configurations, and different ganging them together, or single or triple, that's how you build up to this 40-something styles that we're already representing in these drawings, but they still may not have.
I found it.
You found a four over four?
The building that I liked the best, and I realized why, yes. Please look at one of those most like the barn, please look at your restaurants.
What building?
The clubhouse? All right. Well, see if we got something for everyone.
But you don't have enough of those, so this is...
So, and I think, you know, I would say in that building, they look great, so, you know?
They do look great. They look like a line, I'm sure you know.
Yeah.
I would actually agree, having seen so much window applications and everything, very familiar with what was appropriate for your vast majority of this village, and it was, you know, turn of the century, and people did, they wanted to put in those windows, because that's what, you know, like, the look of that window is strict. And we had to actually say, well, it's not appropriate for your house, because we would not have had those windows. I was one of those people.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted those windows.
Oh, really?
And then I had to do my research, and there are a few houses that were old enough that they had them, most of them on storm windows, over windows that were one over one or two over two. So I think if you're going, yeah, architecturally, historically correct, you are going to see more of the bigger panes of glass. People wanted those bigger panes of glass.
That definitely, if you could get it, you want it. You know, it was a shipping thing and your other reasons, but, yeah, if you can get the bigger pane, you want the bigger pane.
So I get, I get that, and I would, I could actually, like, turn this workup for you, say, yeah, you could have more of those, but I also think we could, to Henry's point, these buildings were built for that era. So if we have 47...
Right, we could have 48 or 49.
Well, I mean, some, you could have a few more of something that is that different variety in your...
Well, we have, what is shown is what we're presenting.
Yeah.
And so there is variety in buildings.
Yes.
Which I think is the intent. Now, and they, you know, obviously each different section of the building, you know, has different looks, and each, from building to building, there are different window configurations. So there's a lot of variety in there, unless there's something that you specifically want in a specific area, they've thought about it.
And I think, you know, to some degree, writing it down was part of it too, like, the more panes is, it just, it's gonna get busier. You know, there's a lot going on here, and, you know, do you need that additional level of detail? I don't necessarily, it's not wrong, but, you know, because we would work it out.
I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm thinking like, I would go more historically accurate, like, I am, I think not as many panes, but I can just see the other, the moments of where we're getting to from there.
Yeah, understood. And, you know, we're not necessarily thinking that this whole thing, the way it's designed, you could kind of look at it as a composition that evolved over time in a way. you could kind of look at it as a composition that evolved over time in a way, so, you know, they don't all have to be the same either. We don't have to say, hey, because we're doing two over two here, that's the kind of the era, right? I mean, the front building, like Kendra pointed out, you know, the clubhouse with the smaller panes, it looks totally appropriate, so it's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not saying that's the reason, but it'll fit, it'll be fine.
It does, it does. I guess, to your point, also, Dan, I guess I had understood that there would be a little more information about the specifics of these details, not for this current, it would be later for the building.
The windows.
But the building.
Correct. And then we'll be window schedule or details.
Obviously, at that point, we'd have all the trim, you know, shown, you know, and everything would be detailed for you, also, you know, there's no question about what's getting built for the contractor or for any other person.
So I would say, from my perspective, they have proposed plans, and that's what's going to be built. So, you know, if they wanted to change their mind about windows, whatever kind of windows they might want to change to, we would come back to us, and ask for that. But right now, there are plans that show every window on every elevation. Those are, and I'm not saying you can't have a dialogue with the applicant about modifying something, but right now, this is what is being proposed.
And on that, just speaking of windows, I see everything here, there are a couple things I've got questions. Well, one thing is on building three, there's this, it looks like a garage door, but it's not.
Yeah, so it's a.
What is that larger?
So it's, well, go ahead, Chris.
Multi-paned.
It's going to be an amenity space, it's, it's.
Oh.
So those two spaces face out towards that kind of central green that's kind of in between three and four?
North elevation, yeah.
And like Chris says, it allows for like an amenity space or some sort of common space to be there, you know, on that, what is the, the canal side of that central space? So that could open up.
So there are a number of those in here.
There's two, oh, there's two floors in the middle.
So those, that serves that purpose?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Can you tell me what you were just asking about in the video?
I can show you. There's the, this building three, there's an area here that's.
Oh, it's on the side, because I was like, it's too big, that's why I was like, I didn't.
Yeah. And it's on buildings three and four, and they both kind of look at each other, you know?
I guess I had, you know, I, but, so all these windows are then same, that are just one pane, that's reasonable pieces.
So those are the cases, yeah.
They open?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, you know, we haven't actually specified that. I think, I think they all open, but we could have liked to make, if there were two in a room, you could do one that's fixed, although I don't think that's our intent right now. We haven't talked at that level.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of just going, is this the meeting that we're talking about? The details for the windows, or is there another time? And I know you've said this is what they proposed.
I'm saying that this is the, the meeting where you talk about the detail of windows, if you have concerns.
Yeah.
And have a dialogue with the applicant about those concerns. Yes, this is the meeting.
Okay.
But those concerns, would they translate into really being the meeting for specific goals?
I think they translate into whether or not your specific concerns are going to be addressed by the applicant, and those will be addressed tonight.
Would we approve of a contingency if I want to go hard on the windows that I want in this building, for example?
I would say that we are, I mean, there's going to be a set of plans. What we understand is certificate of appropriateness of initiative is true, but what those buildings are, are subject to a discussion tonight about that. If they're far specific, I mean.
Yeah, I cannot do this.
Windows are, I'm sorry, Chris, just said it. The windows are scaled out. We know what they're going to be, they're, they're defined by two over twos before before, and that's what will be built.
Yeah.
Unless there is some modification tonight agreed to by the applicant. I'm sorry, Chris.
No, go ahead.
That was it?
You know, I just, and that's kind of how I thought what was going to happen at this meeting, and I just went out and just printed a whole bunch of pictures, and I know you guys have seen all of them.
Not necessarily.
These, these are, and I can send you guys follow-up emails on books and pages that I got them from and everything like that, but the variation between buildings, because you guys are going for the look that's almost on that first page.
Yeah, that's cool.
You know, where there's multiple buildings together, different roof lines, and, and you're seeing multiple different styles of windows. Not necessarily, oh, is it two over two, or eight over eight, or anything like that, but more, more design styles between buildings. And I, and if this is just an opinion or an offering of suggestion, then take it as it is, but it's something that, if this is what we're going to be discussing, I think that I would like to talk with you guys about. And there was just some, and there's really, this is, I'll, I'll send you guys the books that I have on this, but the second page, again, you guys are, this is a great look on what you guys are doing on that second page. And it's a really accurate description of, of what you proposed and what's historically accurate. But then, as you see, the next building over has larger casings on it, so there's just a little bit of design going throughout. On the third page, you can see some, some structure on top of the windows, but your spacing's accurate. These ones have white mullions in it. All of yours, they're all black throughout. I think maybe if you had a building with some white ones and some black ones, and even on the same building, it might help, you know, individualize each.
I, I agree with that, I mean.
It just adds a lot of character, and even the flower mill has white windows with white casings on it. And the building right next to it, the tower, has black windows with black casings on it, but different style windows, so it kind of offers this, like, individualized of the entire.
That same project I was referencing, the Equine Buildings down on the river, you know, we're doing different window colors for different buildings, because they were, you know, they were all the same, they were all replacements that were done in the seventies, all in dark bronze or something like that. But we're doing some green, some dark red, some are tan, you know, because the buildings are all different.
Right.
I think it's an easy way to, you know, create some distinction and work with the color palette of different buildings.
Yeah.
I don't know how this feels about that, but I think that's.
And when we see this page right here, this, this was, you know, I was getting a little nervous that these were the only windows being used in the whole project, of course I can go through, but.
And that's to show that Heather's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is great, but I thought that they were the windows. I won't go through every single one of these, but I do want to point out on the fourth one, it's a really good description of, of what you guys have, especially that top section, you guys have done a great job with that styling. And when I saw this picture, and maybe you think of your guys' design.
Right.
Especially the elevator shaft, the slanted roof, two different pitch lines, so, you know, I'll send you guys the information on where I got all of this, but if, if there's anything you guys could do or, or whatnot about helping individualize each building with different windows and different casings.
Well, I guess that's what I would say, this is the meeting where we require you at.
So let me, let me make this suggestion. Assuming we can go forward tonight, I mean, we can put something in the record that, to allow the architect to add areas where he thinks it's appropriate to add windows with mullions four over four, if that's the width that you want, and add some color to the windows, some white, some different colors. But again, I think there's, there's one architect in the room, and he's very good at it.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know that's a little loose, but we're agreeing with you.
Yeah, I mean, if you stipulate that these are things that you want to see in the final documents, then we'll find a way to incorporate them, and then it would be fine. Because I, I do think the comments are reasonable, I mean, both the mutton patterns and the colors makes sense to me, that, yeah.
And it's just something that we see in looking through this, all of a sudden, it just becomes like every single one's the same.
Yeah.
Just anything you do to vary the buildings.
Yes.
Yeah, there are so many those, sorry. I noticed also, when we were looking at that first picture that Dan brought, he was thinking of arches, just making them all perfect rectangles, like I do, they get more variation in the windows, and make it, it's the gate into our village. I really just want to show people here.
I mean, the arches, you know, typically, well, certainly they're.
And they're not all of them, right?
They're expensive, right, so they're expensive.
Yeah, but maybe just top floor on a building.
On a building.
You typically see them in a masonry, like in a brick wall, as opposed to like a clavata, you wouldn't see this generally, you know, wood building.
And there's only specific buildings that this could work, that something like that would work on.
Right.
So we're not saying go ahead and copy paste across the whole top floor, but.
And there are, again, I'm going to cite the same project, because we've been working on it all, obviously, but the Equine Buildings downtown, the actual window sash is rectangular, but then the brick has an arch, and there's like a little infill panel.
Yeah.
Because you can then buy like a standard window.
And put it in there.
You can still get the arch, and it's still a very historically appropriate detail. I mean, that's the way those windows were originally done.
This third picture has those types, those types of windows.
Yeah, exactly, it does, I saw one in here. So to me, the arched opening in the wall would be something that would be achievable. The arched top windows.
On, yeah.
Yeah, the arched top window is, you know, it's hard to forget, but yeah, you're right. Third picture is one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fact that I'm varying the windows so that it looks more varied, right? It's built over time, and I, forgive me, is Heather, what are the things on this line? There are so many ways to make this not.
Yeah, so we, right, and we've shown, we've shown that on masonry openings, we would have a lintel in some cases, or we'd just have brick soldiers in some cases. You know, you could have like a little brick arch above the window, you could certainly do that, although I certainly want the window to be a square. Yeah, those are lintels, I guess, yeah.
I can't find it, that's where they did it, Dan has with the windows on, with the casings.
Yeah.
Which I did also, I'd really like to see that there was some detailing done around the windows, but now I'm concerned with Jeff is telling me, like, what you see is what you're going to get, and most of the windows that I'm seeing on here don't have a lot from around, almost like the way you see a line inside a house, you know?
There's no casing.
I assume there was going to be more going on around them, but if you're saying, if I don't see it tonight, I can't really ask for it later, then I don't really know what to do.
So, yeah.
And I would also like, going back to the windows, if, if we're talking about things that, you know, we've never seen in this type of building, I think there are many, many casings. I don't know that we would see a lot.
You wouldn't have seen casings for example, I think, no, that's true, I mean, I think they're a nice window.
I do share.
But, you're right, if we're talking about historically accurate, you know, you wouldn't see as many.
I think maybe Christina's question would be answered sort of ideally off.
Yeah, I mean, if that's on the table to like, you know, look at the, we're talking about finding too many details.
Yeah, yeah, if you said.
Is this the meeting, right?
I want to know, yeah, we can give you what you want tonight, and then we can talk about those details later without you saying, you said okay.
Right, but if you said, you know, we would like to see some windows with more, you know, finer mutton pattern, you want to see some with color, you want to see a reduction in our casings.
Those finite.
You know, at least we can figure out how to apply those, the directives that we've got, when we come, you know, come back with the final set of drawings, that does reduce the number of casings, and does, I mean, casings are actually more expensive than del homes, so, I mean, they seal a little better, they're a little more energy efficient maybe in some respects, but, but they're more expensive, so I think, I don't know how this feels about that.
I, I agree to those things. I mean, what I have is just what he said. Window colors to more variation in the mullions, and specifically my four over four in some areas, is that what you're?
Well, I mean, I would even defer to the architect on what would be more, it's not our preference, it's not like this is what I want.
Well, I'll find a way on it, I understand.
Okay. Less casings.
I mean, if you like the idea of the casement, where you can put mullions and casement.
You can, that's right, we can do it that way too.
A visual variation, but you like this, I mean.
We might use all of both at that point, you know, so, I'm a mental.
Okay.
And the window surrounds.
Yeah, like the casings or all the kinds of.
I guess I feel like every single one of the applications that you have is appropriate to have some kind of surround that you can see, it doesn't have to be fancy, on the start of the building. And, you know, I had just taken it like, you know, these are representations, and I'm not going to see every line that I can see on them, but I guess that's really concerning.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you mentioned, I mean, do you have more window questions?
No, I don't.
I just, I just wanted to say, the shape, I'm going to swear, but I love an accent on the top, I just really care about these windows. And some of those headers on a different building, like there's a way to make this.
Got it. Shape. I mean, like I said, it would probably be limited to where we have brick, because that's the logical point to do that, but there would still be quite a few places where we have brick on the canal side, and if we did, you know, a couple of those with arched tops, you don't need to do a lot.
No, you don't.
No, no, you don't.
Right, because the exception is more, it's more interesting, or it's an exception, than it's a rule.
And these are all the same, right, so.
Yeah. No, I think you get a lot more value out of maybe something special, you get a bunch of church people in town, it's not.
Yeah.
I do have a question.
Anything else?
I just had a question about, you indicated that you put in some wood, some actual wood, and as far as the materials, though, is that also like what we're seeing on here is a picture of where it is, you know, but I didn't see, nothing's called out as a material, so I didn't know where wood was.
You know, it comes down to what, what you see as the texture. For example, if you look at building number one, on that left side, north elevation.
Yeah.
So, you know, on that left side, we added that, it's a yellow area, that's a wood grain, a wood material.
And it wraps around to the east elevation from the second.
And then look at the next page, and you can see, that's really what you're going to see from.
The yellow to see on the east elevation.
So the yellow is the wood.
And then the red area, you can see it's a vertical texture, that's going to be a standing seam material.
That's the, more like that, the.
Exactly, exactly. And then where, you know, three quarters through the building, you can, you know, again, it is small, but that's, that's a brick texture, that's going to be a brick area. And so those are the typical materials, and as it's shown is as we're presenting.
Is it, what's the, what's the standing seam metal?
Standing seam metal will mostly be on the roofs.
Oh, it's not a facing material, like the.
I think we're actually showing it on the south elevation of building one, on the left side, right? As that wraps up the roof there, that's shown as a standing seam metal. But there aren't, there aren't a lot, there isn't a lot of that on the project. I mean, we can get a lot of mileage out of the Borden-Badden, we're called, already, you know, it actually has.
But I didn't, I just didn't know which was which on here, and we've definitely arrived.
Yeah, most of it's the Borden-Badden, because I mean, it's.
And is any, any one of these buildings brick, where is the brick?
You're looking at seven. Looking at seven, so the brick on that building would be halfway through the red color.
Okay, I just wanted to keep it right, like this building is.
Correct. And then also across the bridge, the darker charcoal color would be brick.
Well, that's a dark, of darker, if you're color.
Correct. That was that brick that I brought in.
Yeah.
You got the sides facing the canal, and if you go to the. And if you go to the railroad side, you've got one brick facade facing the railroad side. It's the dark one.
I'm clearly just looking for where my windows are.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
Like what are my options on these buildings? That's what I'm looking.
Yeah. And again, you know, the majority is not brick, but you don't believe the majority to make the stadium accents. Yeah, it's going to be better, but I'd just like to.
A massive majority, I guess.
No, I know, I know, no, I'm not suggesting.
But you're saying it's just one would be a standing scene metal?
Yeah, that's right. I think that's the.
That's an older drawing just to show how the architecture compared to what modern change.
Yeah, so I don't know if I can tell you exactly where that goes in the building. But it's similar to the south elevation of building one and the, what would be the west side.
I thought that was an important element to pick up and especially since you highlighted that building.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't.
Other comments? So you guys feel comfortable with those comments in terms of making the changes on the casings and?
The number of casings.
Shape. So, and the frame around the windows.
Yeah, yes.
So questions whether we work on. The question is also whether they're, but we have to be comfortable. And I think that if we had the word reasonable to those conditions, then that at least gives us a way to say what's reasonable. So if there was one window that reflected all of these changes, that would be unreasonable. If there were a variety of windows, reasonable, right? Then we know what that looks like.
And you could even say a variety of windows and a variety of sides or just, you know, expand the.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think if we put the word reasonable, meaning condition like that, then I'm. Yeah, I agree, you definitely make that work. Then we agree with your points.
No other questions? We have a section now for public input and if anybody, one person online.
I just want to put everyone on line to know if anyone speaks to the acting of the board.
Yeah, let's give them a minute.
Hold on, let's turn off, turn off please. Because they're speaking to the board.
Right, speaking to the board.
And they are comments.
They're not asking questions, are they? Above us.
No, 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 no.
Sorry, miss.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to.
No, thank you for the question. I just want to make sure they put it in the Q and A or raise their hand. So I can recognize it. I'm not going to have to pick up anything in chat.
Is there anybody on line?
Yes.
Okay. So we can. So you can go ahead and initiate that.
Yep, I hope they understood. If you want to ask questions, board or comment to the board, please. No questions, yes comments, comments.
Comments, please, yes.
Please put it in the Q and A or raise your hand, please.
Let's wait, let's wait another minute or so.
Oh, plenty of time.
Yeah.
There's a case in my screen.
Yeah.
But there are none?
None, yeah.
Okay, well, just wait.
You know, there's somebody there.
I have nine left. It won't put this in.
Oh, it's an action, okay.
Yeah, and Dirk from our office is probably watching, I would imagine, so there might be one here.
There's nobody here in opposition.
I have no.
Yeah.
Wait, Q and A. Yes, that's true.
That was a statement.
Okay.
Right. No, no comment?
No comments.
Okay. All right, well, that's good. Okay, that closes that portion of the meeting. I think we've got some, had some very good input here. I think we're comfortable with the way things are now and, I don't know. Bill, would you like to?
Yes, I'll make, I'll make a motion to move forward.
Before Bill makes.
Everybody's had their comments. Any other comments before we move, make a motion?
One comment here.
Which one?
We as, we were sent this document, Jeff, does this, what, do we have to do anything about this at tonight's meeting?
No.
You sure we have to?
No, no, but I will tell you for the record that in circa 2010, the trustees did seek, not as per state's policy. The review.
Environment.
Right? On page 22 of that finding document coming from the trustees is a reference to a letter from SHIPPA in which they had no objection to the then project. And so two things I would point out is that the president had no objection to the residential portion of the project. There was some, some concerns about amenities, clubhouse, pool should be moved to the railroad side of the property. However, plans reviewed, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. Plans reviewed by SHIPPA had all of those amenities approximately where they are now. You had, there was sidewalks, there was engagement.
From 2012.
In 2012, had sidewalks, engagement with canal, boat docks. It was all there and SHIPPA supported it in 2012. So this is really a guidance document.
Okay.
And they don't really come down affirmatively to say we hate it all or any, you know, we hate the amenities on the canal.
It was sent to us, I wanted to bring it up on this meeting before, just to have a.
And I'm glad you did, so I could put my statement on the record that the two letters contradict themselves. And I think as a matter of record, we should rely on a position taken in the secret review. Which was, I think was okay. It was virtually the same location for the amenities. And as we discussed tonight, the project's 34.5% smaller. So that would be my, my answer to this letter.
Good, thanks, Jeff. Bill, you started out.
Yep, I'm ready anytime you are.
Go ahead.
Give us a second.
Everybody, any further comments?
There is another comment.
I just wanted, I'm pretty sure that I made this clear about the windows surrounds. But like the more that I look at these windows, I just really don't think the surrounds on them are appropriate or what it's supposed to look like. You just not have a surround like that. It would have a sill that's wider than surround. You'd have the theaters. I would hold the end of the sill and stick out a bit further than the edge. So I guess I just assumed this was.
Well, at this scale, you know, because the drawings are small, the sill is. Oh, really? Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think it's, I just assumed it was a 3D representation where you just didn't put all the details.
Well, in some cases, 3D representations may not have all the detail. I think you should really refer to the scaled drawings. But at the same time, if those are so small that a sill is pretty small at this scale, so you may not even. But these windows will have a traditional sill. That's the way they're going to be made. And the size of the casing, I think, you know, is something that if you think we should be varying that or providing more variety, you should state it in your motion.
Right, I just wanted to picture.
No, that's fine. I know where you're going.
And then what meeting would that be next for our board?
That, no, it's not a meeting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Chris. I didn't mean it as a meeting, but. For a review of.
Well, we're going to see the plans that are effectively part of the building permit application.
Which will have.
And before they would issue the permit, they would. They would show you the plans, I suppose, and then you would have to say, yeah, this meets the conditions that we.
Reasonable or this is not reasonable.
Okay, so that'll be another meeting.
It would be, I think, your own internal meeting. I don't think we would be there necessarily.
We are internal, we have the final.
I'll, I'll put that into the motion.
The bill is going to hire to review the drawings. He's going to review the drawings for code and for compliance. And compliance with this, which will say, I'm going to say four things. You can say how you want to say it, Jeff.
Yeah.
That the, that the architect will add variation to the window colors, the mullions.
Arches.
Arches.
You know, casing, I think.
And casings to the sills, add variation.
And casement reductions.
Just, just, yeah.
And I'm confident, I'm confident the details that we'll get onto these drawings, we'll expand on this to the extent that, the thing that you're looking for. But I think that's how it's going to get done. It's going to get done, these construction documents. They're going to, on the desk of some, the building inspector. And then, like you said, there's a review of those documents, whether it's independent architect or whatever path they take in here. Or give you the, confirm with you and say, yeah, does this meet your.
And when I keep saying meeting, that Chris says we're not going to, that's the meeting I'm talking about for our board that we'll have in the future date.
Right. And then your attorney can give you advice and counsel on, you know, you might not think that this mullion should go on this window instead of this window. That's still reasonable, but, you know, like just example, if he puts it all in one window, it's not reasonable. There's no building permit.
That's reasonable. And then if there were comments that generated by that, we're going to have to address them before we get the permit issued, you know, or come back to you and tell you why we didn't address them.
Petra, we will let whoever reviewing it for that purpose know that we want to see those plans before their, before the building permits are permitted. So they'll come to us and let me. All right, we'll talk about reasonable, we'll talk about whether every window has the, whatever Christina said. Traditional casing and all of the things that we've discussed. Reasonable numbers of whatever, you know, we've said and.
Well, I guess that I just, I'm sorry.
No.
Because a reasonable number of traditional casings doesn't.
No, no, no. No, my understanding was there are going to be casings on the windows.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's not, doesn't come under the heading of reasonable. There are, are going to be casings on the windows area.
Right, well, except.
But I meant traditional casings, not just.
No, no, traditional.
The only place there wouldn't be casings on the windows presumably would be on brick openings where you don't have a casing because it's, you know, brick returns and there's maybe lintel, but there's no casing.
So it's going to be traditional casings. Those are words.
Yeah, I've actually defined your drawing and I, I, yeah, I.
You said.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's close, but I do, like, like you're saying, I'm not seeing all the details either. But it is actually dimensioned and still doesn't look like it's, it's all separate, you know. But I mean, I know, I know we do detailing, you know, like, you know, we do detailing and I don't need to tell you.
No, you know, but, but in the approval and then we'll address it.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm assuming that there's more detail that we will see. So this one has, you know, green, that bench sill, but it looks like it's all one plane.
Yeah, no, it should be proud of the casings and, you know, your bed and all that.
Yeah, so it's, those are the things that I expect later with more details. So if you want to put that in the motion.
We are going to put it in.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion and I'll try and make sure that I, I cover the window situation effectively in the motion. Okay? I make a motion that we approve the plans as presented in mass and scale, which reduces the mass by 34.5% from where it was several years ago. And so I move that mass and scale be approved. I move that we review, have a future, a further review of the window situation in probably all of the buildings.
Well, Bill, Bill, can I interject?
Yep.
Okay, so the approval, and I'm going to need everybody's help here, shouldn't be going to miss one, will be subject to a reasonable number of windows with different mutton patterns, a reasonable reduction of casement windows, a reasonable number of windows with different mullion colors. Am I correct?
Yeah, or actually sash or frame color, yeah.
So.
Materials and size.
Reasonable numbers of window casings and sashes. Windows will have or be finished with a traditional casing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're in there yet.
I think it's in there.
They're arches.
Here it is, shades, the arches.
So, so what, no, what is it?
Our arched top openings, a reasonable number of, arch tops on the reasonable.
A brick opening.
Brick windows, yeah.
So a reasonable number of arched top windows on the brick portions of the building. You got them all?
Dorothy is writing furiously here.
So Bill, do you want your motion to include that?
Just as Jeff described and we would expect to see a proposal from the applicant in the future on those windows.
No, we'll, no, Bill, we're going to see it from our building department. And then.
Okay, but we, we have a chance to review that.
It'll come from the building department.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's the proposal. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I have to make a motion to issue the C and the A under the conditions stipulated by the attorney.
Bill, will you further amend your motion that we issue a certificate of approval based on that motion?
Yes, I recommend that we, I move that we issue a certificate of approval based upon that recommendation and based upon our viewing of the changes in the windows. Is that correct? Is that correct?
From the building departments.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Okay. Do I, do I have a second to that motion?
To the amended motion.
Yes, I second that.
Still.
Okay. Dorothy?
Yep.
Member McFried.
Yes.
Member Evans.
Yes.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Member Lanahan.
Yes.
Chair Power.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
And thank, thank you.
Don't take it away. There's no way. That wasn't a comment on your own.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
That's why we have recordings.
That's right.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Okay.
No, we still have a lot of work to do, but we'll do the work now. You guys can take a break for a while.
It's not even eight o'clock, but certainly.
Can I make a motion that we approve these minutes?
Yes.
All right. Your game's still going on.
Yes, yes, yes. Sorry. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Wait, let me get up first.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our meeting on Monday, August 29, 22, as submitted.
Second.
Yes.
Bill McFried.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Paul.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted for September 1st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan.
Member McFried.
Yes.
Member Evans.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Lanahan.
Yes.
Chair Paul.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion during the meeting.
Second.
Oh, I didn't count that on. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Oh, no.
No, we don't have those minutes. Let's do that.
I was like, what?
What?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thanks.
Bill?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
All right.
Member McFried.
Say yes.
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 Member Olson.
Yes.
Close the meeting.
Member, Chair Power.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Well, folks, it's, it's only taken eight years and about, what, Chris, 100 meetings?
180.
180.
Today's 180.
Thanks, Chris.
Bill.
Thanks a lot.
Bill, thank you very much.
There's a cam over there.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
I made it.
100 minutes. We wanted to be warm and not talk.